To figure out what the best way to present Puppet is because the audiences always vary and people are interested in different things, whether they're interested in the Ruby part, or the sysadmin part, or the automation part, or the modeling part, or all those things. And it seems like when I was at Baileysa last time, all of my sysadmin jokes were very popular, and so I think this is much more of a sysadmin audience, which is not surprising, of course, being Baileysa, right? So I'm gonna do my best to this time focus. Last time I got to the high level stuff and pretty much had to stop because I had 20 minutes. So I'm gonna try to, my goal is to show, actually show Puppet doing some things and show what it can do. I have a presentation that I, should I move it down?
You probably don't really need that.
Does it help the recording? Does that matter? Should I just skip it?
You don't really need it if you don't.
Okay, I'll just skip it. Alright.
It just seems to be overachieving.
Alright, okay. So I have a presentation that I could go through and lecture and stuff like that, but I'm much more interested in questions and interaction as much as possible. I brought two demos with me that I can show you. One of them is video because it involves networking. It involves doing things on my server that I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to get to and didn't wanna risk that thing blowing up. But I also have some local demo I can show. So I figured I'd start by just going through some of the, just the background and what Puppet is and how it works and why I wrote it. And then hopefully go into showing Puppet doing some interesting things like breaking everything. So, any questions to start? I hope not, since I haven't said anything of interest yet, right?
Where'd you get the shirt?
So the shirt, there was somebody on Ruby, on the Ruby mailing list who was making t-shirts, and he had a bunch of t-shirts I wasn't interested in. And I've been trying to get better about advocating Ruby, and so I said, "I think you should make this shirt." He said, "Okay," and so I figured I should buy one. I, I don't remember the-
I can search for it.
Yeah. I'll definitely be wearing it to my talk at the L.A. Prolongers next week.
Cool, cool. Draw some blood.
Yeah. So I've been a sysadmin for like 10 years. I'd been doing almost entirely Unix for that time, did, started out a little bit of Mac, but most of it been Unix. And I have a degree in chemistry. I almost went into science and decided I could make more money in computers, which so far, seeing my wife is in, starting her eighth year as her getting her PhD. I'm definitely winning. So I, about four years ago, I essentially couldn't really be a normal sysadmin anymore. I, I got to the point where I had to, I had to take control of everything. I couldn't let, I couldn't just like do things one at a time or willy-nilly. I, I, I got this control freak going on where I started trying to get my tools as powerful and all-seeing as possible. And I got to the point where I had to start doing development. I had to start developing glue code in my own, and started out being very small with glue code, and then got bigger and bigger, and now, you know, clearly I have an ego problem. So I also, I just cannot stand software. The, the best software in the world only sucks. The worst software is significantly worse than that. And so I have this, I'm definitely good at complaining about things and saying, "Well, this could be better this way. This could be better this way." And mostly I try to develop things that I think are better. And so my goal with Puppet is to take my complaints as a sysadmin and as a user of these tools, and for a long time as a developer and a consultant in these tools, and create a tool that I wanted to use, but that I also thought would actually make other people's lives easier. And some people, I expect initially it's gonna make sysadmins' lives easier. The long-term goal is that it will make anybody who manages systems' lives easier. I mean, everyone's mother does something on computers. Everyone has to install software and make things work and upgrade a computer and all those things which are annoyingly, astoundingly complicated. And we often can't even do it easily, much less non-technical people. And a lot of that is that software is really complicated. There aren't clean ways to talk to a computer about itself. There aren't clean ways to ask a computer questions. Well, you know, it's interesting. So his comment was developers are idiots. And I don't really, I, I think a lot of it is that everyone does what they're fond of. Everything, everyone does what they're interested in. And almost no one is interested in large, you know, large ideas, large standards that have simple implementations. Very few people are interested in that. And I think especially, I've been looking for a sysadmin slash developer to partner with for like a year, and ever, no one is interested. People just don't do this. People don't, a lot of sysadmins do some development. They do small scripts, you know, they do a couple thousand lines a year or a couple thousand line projects. I can't seem to find many people who are really good developers and are interested in systems or really good systems people who are interested in becoming an entrepreneur and starting their own company and building good tools and surviving on the quality of their tools instead of surviving on the quality of their firefighting or on the quality of their practice or-
I would like to do both, but I guess, but I think I'm too stupid.
Well, I'm definitely too stupid. I mean, if you saw, you know, that, I know my software sucks. You know, every time I look at it, I go, "Oh God, this thing's gotta be fixed." And I gotta rewrite that, refactor all this stuff. It seems like 90% of my workload should be refactoring, but I still seem to manage to add new functionality. And I seem to have produced a tool that people are using and are liking a lot. I mean, I've got a colleague in Australia who has been using Puppet full-time for a client since about March. And I confronted him last month and I said, "You know, you haven't submitted a bug in this whole time." And so that really makes me think that you're not actually using it. He said, "No, actually, I'm using it all the time. I just haven't had any problems with it yet." So at least some people are using it. And that, you know, and I'm ridiculously dumb about this kind of thing. So the other thing is I'm really lazy. I would really like to not have to do anything at all. I'd like to not work. I'd like to not have to go to work. I'd like to not have to even cash the checks. Please just, you know, shift it directly into the bank account. And it got to the point as a sysadmin where I realized that I could, it was possible to write tools that would do 90% of the work for me. And I could just do the modeling, the planning, and feed, as long as there was a way I could feed, I could translate my plan, my model to the tool, then the tool could translate that to reality. It could say, "Oh, well, I know what you want now," and it could go out of the system and do all the work. So the problem was the tools that I had to translate to were not very good at understanding what I wanted. So CfEngine, you know, isconf, Perl, all these tools, you had to do a lot of translation. You could, you could say something in a way that you wanted, and then you'd write that down in some other tool and then translate that for the tool you were using. You know, you'd write it in Vim or whatever. So my goal with Puppet is to write a tool that I can speak directly to this tool. I can say, "Look, I want an LDAP server. This is what I want my LDAP servers to look like. This is what my web, I want my web servers to look like. I want these things to be related in this way." And I can say that directly to Puppet, and it'll go, "Cool." And it'll compile that onto the network and it'll, you know, do that to my system. So that's my goal, is to get a tool that I can speak to in as close to the language as possible of how I think about the world, of how I wanna manage my systems, of how the systems really think about themselves. So yeah, that mostly talks about, one of the big things that is, one of the big goals in Puppet is that I wanna get away from knowing anything about the systems that I'm managing. I wanna get away from knowing the details, because I don't really care about, so I'm using a Mac here. I don't know how many of you guys know, if you had to make a user in netinfo on the command line, how many of you guys could do it? Okay, so that's one. How many of you guys wanna know how to do it? Two, you know? No one wants to know how to do it. And yet you're forced to because there's no other way to do it. So you, you know, "Okay, well, I'll write a tool that does it." Well, you wrote a tool and somebody else wrote a tool, and there are 500,000 tools out there that do just what that person who wrote it wants. But why? I just want a damn user. Everybody, their model the same, they work the same, but there aren't any good tools. So my goal is to get to the point where I can speak at high level to Puppet, and Puppet will go, "Cool, I can translate that to RPM or dpkg or crontab or, you know, whatever it is that you're talking about, I can translate that for you." I'm sure everyone in here has an operating system preference. And I don't know how you guys choose your operating system, how, how you decide what is the best operating system, but my preference is based on how manageable it is. I like an OS that's not gonna assume things about how I want it to work and then force those things down my throat. And I want an OS that's gonna allow me to change things and make them, make it very easy to automatically manage things. So I, I use Debian right now because I find that it's the most manageable OS. But a lot of software, I also choose software that's more manageable. Apache right now, Debian's, especially Debian's installation of Apache, for instance, is the most manageable installation. They've done it very well. You can dump little pieces of files all over the place, and Apache will deal with that automatically for you. But there are very, very difficult to manage tools. Oracle is an astoundingly difficult to manage application. You have to have special people to manage its internals, but then managing outside, usually it's just a black box. You know, you, you use this huge set of 24 DVDs to install the thing, and then you can never touch it again. You don't know what's going on. You can't repeatedly install it. So I would like to get to the point where the tools that we use to do our jobs are so good that manageable software has a competitive advantage over unmanageable software. So that stuff that's clearly easy to manage takes this much work, and stuff that's difficult to manage takes this much work. And so all the CEOs will go, "Why does it cost $25 million to install Oracle but only $800 to install Postgres? That doesn't make any sense." And I'm talking, you know, TCO or, you know, whatever you wanna call it. To me, it's manageability.
I'm so glad you didn't say MySQL.
I, you know, to me, I, I hate all databases. I can't stand, I don't wanna talk to databases either. I do a little bit of database interaction and some experimental stuff in Puppet, and I'm using Rails, Active Record stuff, because I don't wanna write SQL. I just, you know, it's simple stuff. Leave me alone. So this is one of the things that drives me crazy. I've been a lot of shocks where, you know, clearly they're the state of the art. They have all the best stuff. They have all the great tools, and it all sucks. I mean, how many people are really happy with their monitoring system? Why?
Fix that plug for September 12. Fix that monitoring problem.
I mean, it's embarrassing. It just is. Why is it so embarrassing? Why is it so bad? How many people have their computers solve their problems when their monitoring system says something's broken? How many people trust your computer to solve that versus, you know, the first little bit, you let the computer try something, then you go, "And then just page me, because otherwise I know you can't do it." It's just silly, and I don't like any of this. I think, this is my favorite one, because I, I tended to be in corporate environments. Corporate environments love these security policies. They have this complicated 72-page HIPAA, SOX compliant, you know, whatever. We've got these security Nazis who do all this work. And it's a Word pa, it's a Word document that they give to a guy who makes $10 an hour. And they say, you know, SSH to every machine on the network once a month and make sure it meets this policy. And you're, that's a hope. You're just on crack. If you can't feed your policy to your computer in a way that your computer can say yes or no, or your computer can say, "I'm in compliance or I'm not," and preferably say, "I'm in compliance, would you like me to, I'm not in compliance, would you like me to be in compliance?" That's a policy. That's, that's what you need to be able to do with your computers, is give them a security policy that they understand and you understand. And you just, it's just not possible right now. So all of these complaints, all these desires on my part, and, you know, five years of using CfEngine and isconf and, and hacking the heck out of both of them to do what I want and to be able to model them in the way that I want, eventually resulted in me trying to find another way. I worked at a commercial company, I played logic for six months, and they were not producing software that I would wanna use as a sysadmin. So I just, you know, I wasn't interested in helping them make, make more of it. And eventually I just said, you know, "I can either quit being a sysadmin because I can't tolerate the tools anymore, or I can, you know, make a go at it." So I spent 10 months last year developing, basically in a vacuum, trying to get a prototype and began publicly talking about this a lot, just before I spoke here, actually. I think I spoke here in December, right? That was the, and, and that was just after I'd begun publicly talking about it. So the big thing is the cross-platform. The cross-platform, and the word semantic, I asked at Baileysa last year, how many people knew what the word semantic meant? And we were doing this conversation, and Narayan kept saying, "I need semantics, no semantics." And, and, you know, it's an overused word. Developers use it a lot, and sysadmins almost never use it. So most of the people in the room didn't really know what it meant.
What does it mean?
It means meaning.
Yeah, no.
So exactly. So the, the point is that I don't wanna talk about details. I don't wanna talk about crontab. I don't wanna talk about RPM. I don't wanna talk about netinfo. I wanna talk about the stuff that I want. I want a user. I want the user to look like this. I want a package. I want it to behave like this. I want a service. It depends on these things. I want these files. I want this behavior. And I don't wanna talk about how you get there or what it took to do that or whether you're on Red Hat, you do this way, or you're on Debian, you do that way. I don't care about any of that stuff. I want my objects. I want the details. I want you to leave me the hell alone.
What about dependencies?
So you can, you can specify that. So, I mean, dependencies matter a lot. And in Puppet, you have to, you have to specify them explicitly. We can't discover dependencies. But you can say, you know, I mean, the canonical way to talk about a service is you've got a package, config file, and the service. And usually you would say, you want the package, you want the, the service to depend on both the package and the config file. And if either of those changes, you want the service to restart itself. So you can say that in Puppet. You can say, "The service should subscribe to this thing and that thing, and if either of those change, we restart ourselves." And that's the demo I have, is deploying a copy, creating a subversion repository and creating a track installation to manage that subversion repository and then re, you know, setting, including setting of Apache and then restarting Apache based on that. And it's all declarative. I don't, I don't say at some point, "And now restart Apache." Just say, "Look, these things are related, and then because I created a track install, that modified Apache's config, and that notifies Apache that it should restart."
But there is a way that you can say, if you have this like bundling, there's like two, there are three services that are related. I only want you to restart this one.
Yeah. So you specify, "These things should react in this way." And you can also just say, "This should go before this, but don't restart this." And you can go either direction, too. You can say, so in, for instance, with track, I'm gonna have, I have 10 track instances on my server at home, and each of those instances manages its own config file, its own Apache config file. And if any of those files change, I want it to say, "Now let Apache another piece of restart itself." So Apache gets managed, checks itself after all these other config files have checked. And, you know, if any of these things have changed, and Apache goes, "Oh, looks like one of my dependencies has changed. I should restart myself."
So you do like a topological sort?
I do exactly that, a topological sort.
This is what, so in BCG2, you do this using bundles.
Yeah.
They have a similar mechanism, so.
I don't know as much about VCFG's bundles. I can't get past the XML. All I see is angle brackets, but.
Yeah, that's, my boss, the main turnoff for deployment at our, our place from that perspective is the fact that he uses XML.
So the tool that, that he's talking about is VCFG, and he calls it VCFG2 because it's the second release, but he does, puts it in the name instead of considering a release number. And it's by Narayan Desai out of Argon National Labs. And Narayan's been working on vconfig for about three years, I think. And he started talking about it about a year ago because he's, he's got it pretty heavily in production use at Argon. So he's comfortable it coming outside now. So it's, I'd say that Puppet and vconfig are about the same level of, I don't know. We've been working on it mentally about the same amount of time. He's been working on it literally longer than I have because he, you know, he's at a big lab where he has a lot of, a lot of machines he can manage, whereas I'm
just beating my little machines in the basement.
So the, the point here, and that, so you got the semantic abstraction layer where you're, you know, I, I speak users and you speak user add, or netinfo or whatever. I don't care. And this is where the, the sysadmin split happens. Sysadmins, a lot of people are interested in simpler ways to manage their, simpler ways to change their computers. Look at a lot of, a lot of developers, and they have to do things like create users, and they have to install packages, and they have to set config file modes, and they have to change files, and they have to set up cron jobs. Their lives would be easier with a library that they could write to. They would make these changes. But sysadmins want this centralized, they want a tool that makes their lives easier. So as much as possible, I try to write the library so that it can be useful for anybody, but I also have Puppet as a tool that makes the sysadmin life easier. And, and it's very much, I focus on the, on the life of the sysadmin, but I try not to write in a way that precludes other people from taking advantage of it.
So beat me down if this question is too complicated or diverges too much from the other half from what you have planned. You were talking about services, and you said, "Okay, services, some package, let's say SSHD, and you'll open SSHD server, and some config file at the SSHD underscore config." A lot. One of my real thorns in my side is specifically for SSH is the host identity, which people, when they reimagine machines, they don't save the SSH identity. So what we end up as sysadmins in our IT infrastructure doing is conditioning everybody who uses every one of our SSH machines everywhere to just accept willy-nilly, "Oh yeah, host key changed, whatever, that happens all the time." So is there any way of expressing the things that have to stay invariant from one reimaging cycle to another or stay invariant to the host within the framework that you're describing?
So in Puppet, and I think this is the base-
Something that preserves the SSH host ID or any kind of character or, you know, host identity key?
In Puppet, and I think in most tools the way, the client can essentially not write to the server. And you don't want your client to write to the server for a whole lot of reasons, but at least part of it is that it would become wickedly complex. Things would start happening, and you would kinda go, "Where'd that come from?" And it's like, "Well, the client decided to start doing that in January, and, you know, we haven't had any of this stuff."
I'm just as happy if the server pushes and corrects key back out to it to make sure that that stays-
So in that case, you basically have a few options. You, you basically have two options. The first is to ask the client what its SSH keys are, and then automat, use those, that information to automatically generate everyone's known host file. And then when a, when a key changes, it'll regenerate the known host file, which isn't perfect because there's a window during which if you connect to it, you know, the, the keys are different and you get that warning. And the second is to generate all your, all your keys on the server and have the clients ask the server what the keys should be. And as long as you're not using SSH for your management, that works fine. If you're using SSH to do any work, to get to the point where you can give the box its SSH keys, clearly that won't work. So those are your two ways.
What I'm curious about, by the way, is when the SSH key has changed because somebody reimagined or restored the machine.
Right, so in that case, you just, you can generate it on your server and then push it down from your server.
But why, so why don't you simply make, make that part of the Kickstarter procedure?
I normally do if I have enough control over my own Kickstarter procedure, but we'll get into various environments where I come in, they already have this established, and I don't actually have a choice in it. By the time I'm there, the damage has already been done.
Right, that's, because that's just a bad policy. I'm pushing after it.
It's a terrible policy.
Yeah.
But on a follow-up on that option. So how hard is it to make a plugin that could say, for either a specific file or a group of files, use a different backend? Let's say if you wanted to grab or dynamically generate specific files from, say, MySQL or a different kind of database, would that be-
Well, so do you use vconfig also? Okay.
He works at my place, so he knows about vconfig.
Okay, because it sounds like that's, I mean, that's how vconfig works, is it generates files on the server. So the general methodology of Puppet is that you specify a very simple, I have some, that's not a very good example, but you specify a very simple language that looks, looks like a hash. Specify this on the server. And roughly that information gets sent to the client. The job of the compiler is to make sure that you haven't gotten any config conflicts and that, and it's also to do a composition. So you can say, "This server is an LDAP server and a web server and a Solaris box, and it's on this network, and it's controlled by this guy." And so use that information to compile a configuration. The server does not change that, that information at all. It doesn't generate files, doesn't do any of that kind of stuff. When it gets to the client, the client is responsible for translating any of this information to, I guess I would call it reality. So so here's a simple example of what, here's a, here's, here's what it looks like to manage a service in Puppet. And Puppet's server is essentially dumb. Its client doesn't have, its client knows what a service means and its server does not. So the server does some validation and says, "Does a service accept the attribute ensure?" But it doesn't do anything beyond that. It doesn't know what a service means. You pass it to the client, the client goes, "Ah, I'm a Debian box. When you say service to me, I mean this." And Puppet has a way of managing providers, is what I call the backend. So for services, I've got a base provider where you have to specify the binary to start it, and you have to specify a pattern to match it in the PID table. But I also have a normal init provider. Debian has its own little changes because it's got updaterc.de, and Red Hat and SUSE have check config.
Do you support Debian tools?
I do not today, but I just did an implementation in Stanford, and they do use supervise. So it looks like that they're gonna provide a supervised provider. So I just did, I looked, I was looking at my, I feel like providers are very easy, but I was wondering last night how easy they really are. And I was looking at my providers, and my longest provider is 211 lines, and my shortest provider is 15 lines, and the average provider is under 100 lines of code. Because most providers, say packages, which are probably the most complicated provider, you have to have an install method, like they're basically just wrappers to commands. Here's, here's the way you call dpkg to install stuff. Here's the way you call dpkg to remove stuff. And that's not much code. And that's how complicated it is to parade, to create a new provider. And all that's on the client. So in terms of what it takes to write a new provider, it can be, you know, if there's a provider that's very similar, which is, you know, aptitude is gonna be so much like apt, it's gonna be like five lines of code. So I won't have to worry about it. Yeah, so the server, what the server does is it compiles, it takes this, compiles that into these hash-like objects. So this, this is the code that I used to do the, the video that I'm gonna run later. And the SVN repo and the track instance are defined types that I have that are significantly more complicated. So here's some, exec is just what it sounds like. It's just, I run a script. And there are some things that make exec a lot more manageable and, and function item-wotely, meaning you can run the same exec 25 times and only, it'll only do anything if there's a problem. But I've got a file in here, I've got some files, and then down here is kinda the interesting part. This is where I create the Apache configuration. And so you specify the path to the configuration and, you know, owned by root, group, root. And I want this to happen after all of the other Apache configuration. And Puppet supports templating, so I say, "Here's the template, here's where you'll find the template to define my configuration." And that template, I use ERV because it's, it ships with Ruby. It's pretty easy. It's what Rails uses. Everyone seems pretty fond of it, so. And what the template does is it basically collects all of the other variables that, you can reference the variables in the template that are set in Puppet. So the CGI there and the tractor will both be available, as will name, which is like self. It's automatically set for you. So this creates that, and this notifies the line where it says, "Tell Apache to restart itself." And notice, I, I mean, it's just a simple name. You know, the, I know the service is named Apache2. I know it's a service. And so this just says, "Hey, notify Apache2." So if nothing gets done here, if the file's already correct, in this case, it generates the file, sends the file to the client, and it says, "Hey, client, your file should have this content." And the file knows how to check whether that content is correct. If it's correct, it doesn't do anything. Nothing happens. Apache doesn't get notified, nothing like that. If it's incorrect, then the file goes, "Ah, I know how to fix myself." And then it also says, "Hey, Apache, one of your dependencies changed. You know, do something about it." And Apache goes, "Ah, I know how to respond to changes," and it restarts itself.
So, so there's only one type of notification?
That is correct, at this point. Internally, there are other types, but they're, they aren't exposed.
Yeah.
Exactly. And then I create the same link to actually create the track.cgi, CGI Python thing in my CGI bin directory. So this is, this is an example of a, of a custom-defined type that I've created, and I've got 10 of these in my web server definition, my web server class, that creates these and manages these, and the, this is one of my favorite parts. The, the config manager, and this basically, my template is pretty much my entire track config with a whole lot of variables. This is all the options that my track thing accepts. 99.9% of the time, I use all the defaults. So I've got all these defaults that I've set up, and you can see I need to update my config highlighter. I wrote a syntax highlighter for Puppet, but it's a little bit old. I need to update it to meet some of the new syntax. But basically, here's all the defaults, but I can override any one of these. And basically, you look at a track config, and everything you'd ever wanna change is acceptable as a default. And I use those to generate the entire config file. So I can go in and say, "You know what? I wanna have it emailed to this mailing list instead of directed to me." And it'll make that change and... So I have a very smart server. That's one of the differences, a very smart client and a very dumb server. That's one of the big differences between vconfig and Puppet. Vconfig does all the thinking on the server. The cool thing is that it gives you a lot of room to, to do thinking on the server. The downside is that you can never have your clients talk to each other because your clients are ridiculously stupid. And you, you have a lot less reusability on the, you can't have, so here's the example, here's one of the demos I was going to show you guys. This is one of the things that I like a lot about Puppet. This is a script that I wrote for a client, I was trying to, I was at a client site, and they had a bunch of users that they wanted to start managing. And I said, okay, well, I just parse that to password, then turn that into Puppet accounts, and I was like, no, this is stupid, I'm going to have Puppet, create a Puppet config for me. So what I basically said was, I figured out a way to, to use the Puppet library to basically cat the current configuration. So I can use this command to say, um, let's see, user loop. And it'll tell me, this is what loop looks like right now. And if I don't specify user loop, then it'll just go and give me all of them eventually. That info's a little bit slow. But, so here's all the accounts on my system and Puppet, and this is, this is executable Puppet code. So it's all isomorphic, I can go from Puppet code to reality, and then back from reality to Puppet code.
Verification.
So, so I've got that, and I was like, well, this is halfway from a, to being a decent tool. So today, just to see how fun it would be, I added the ability to use this to edit real items. That didn't work. Of course it worked in reality, you know.
You mean there's a direction that doesn't?
No, I got it now. All right, so notice I've got my initial in there now. It's making the change, it's, I don't know why it's so stinking slow. This Mac seems to like to change its name all the time, I think all Macs do, based on, yeah.
In other words, it's DHCP client likes to do like a reverse lookup and name the machine after what DNS it should be.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Yeah, newer Red Hat boxes are doing that too, I find it incredibly irritating.
Is it because they're using NDNs responder?
There's actually a setting in an Etsy system config file somewhere that can tell it to not do that.
Okay.
I don't remember it.
So, so clearly, uh, something is being weird, and this demo is not working, maybe it will now, I don't know. No, so I tested this like 86 times in my hotel room, and as with all demos, no work in reality. I, I'm guessing it's related to networking or something. So I just wrote this like today, so it's not too surprising that it failed. But in my hotel room, it was changing my, you know, changing my information, so it's pretty easy to, basically in like 25, 30 lines of code, I created an interactive program that you can cat any element, modify that element, and commit it back to the system, and it'll change the system. So even if you're a one-off kind of, I just like to do all kinds of cool things in localhost, and I don't like to think centrally, and I don't want to think big, you can still use Puppet to do simple things and not have to know anything about your computers. Yes.
So, on a note, like, in examples, say, also regarding dependencies, say, in example Port Street for, from FreeBSC where they actually have a pretty large description over dependency needs.
Right.
Is it, there any way to import existing descriptions of dependencies?
So, packages are a rat hole, all packaging systems are different, and they all have their hatefulness.
Exactly.
Dependencies in packages are like a rat hole and a rat hole with somebody stomping on your head. If somebody would like to implement, like hooks into packaging systems so that Puppet can reuse those dependencies, that would be great. I personally have already lost enough years of my life just trying to implement package support, that doing that dependency, I think, probably would, literally would kill me. It's, it's just too complicated, it's too different, how would you interact with that packaging? Because that's the real problem, is how do you interact with this, with this packaging mechanism? And it varies so dramatically on so many systems, and the modeling is so stupidly different that, I'm not going to do that anytime soon. If somebody, if some company really wants that and says, Luke, we'll give you $50,000 to do that, I would consider it, but I wouldn't definitely say yes, because that's not going to be fun. I would love to have that, I, I hope to God some neurotic, psychopathic savant with a lot of free time decides to do that, that would be awesome, but it's probably not going to come from me.
Isn't there a project working on a unified packaging system so you don't have to have your RPM?
I think there are like seven of them. I think there's one from 1993. Yeah, I mean, that's the problem, is that there are tons of them. Yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't attend your December talk.
Uh huh.
Could you, in one, describe, if I have a setup Puppet server and a bunch of cold dead hardware, how do I get to get my predefined services running?
And probably for the foreseeable future, Puppet does not do Pixie booting and automatically install systems. You have to use whatever your OS tool is, and the goal is that you do as little as possible with your OS install tool, and then you hand off to Puppet as quickly as possible. And then Puppet should be able to say, ah, I'm a, I'm a clean, fresh machine, and it's X, you've configured essentially based on its node name or whatever, to be these kind of services, and all your machines get this, and all your Red Hat boxes get that, and so it composes its configuration, passes it to the client, and that'll work from there. And you're in a specified configuration that looks like, so, uh.
So one of the things I put on with my jumpstart or whatever is the Puppet client.
Yes, exactly, you put on Puppet, and then by default, if you start the Puppet demon, it will start searching for, it will connect to the hostname Puppet, so you should be able to, in most cases, set up a CNAME and never have to configure your client to get it to work. It'll connect to the Puppet server on reboot, and you'll be happy. And then the server, you know, compiles its configuration, and you're good from there, basically. And then it's all about what you say on the server. At that point, you shouldn't have to interact with your client anymore, you've got SSHless administration, and you should be done. And then it all goes down to these config files, and it's what you can say in the config files, and how you configure things for it to happen. Is that the one minute description you're looking for?
Okay, I want you to flesh it out somehow going forward, but yeah, that helps, thanks.
Yeah, so normally you would maintain these config, this is, this is a program, and the compiler for the program is Puppet, and the chip the program runs on is your network. And if you think about this, I mean, it is a program, and it provides functionality, that functionality is the services that run your network, and you should treat this like a programmer would. You should have a version control system, and you should have, you know, all those things that programmers come to expect, you should have those on your configuration management system. So this is what, every machine on my network, which is getting unfortunately very small these days, gets, this is what it looks like, how I initialize all my machines to start with. So I have a base class that everyone gets, I have a class named under every operating system I maintain, which used to be like five, and now it's like two. Everyone gets sudo, and then I have a couple of other things that, you know, kind of aren't worth talking about, I can go into detail, but, but then I have, uh.
So that line includes sudo.
That basically says?
That's going to say, oh, look.
There's a sudo.
You have a sudo package or whatever it is on the system, and install that for you. That's the theory.
I have a sudo class, and the remote file is just a definition, I wrote the raps file and says, retrieve the sudoers file, and, and then I basically say, make sure that sudo and sudo are the right mode. I don't manage the package here, in this case, because all the platforms that I run already have sudo installed them, and so I haven't had to do that, but clearly a good way to do it, you know, clearly you would want to talk about the package, but sudo is one of those really easy and really fun to manage, because I always, I always start with sudo because the same sudoers file works everywhere in your network, and it's really important. If sudo breaks, you can't really fix it in the house a lot of times. So it's a great place to start in managing things. But, so I have relatively complicated classes, like my web server class, where I'm managing the config file and then the authorization files separately, and here's all the track instances where I've got all the different tracks that I'm making. And once I've got this, I've got, and I actually have my LDA, my, my node configurations are stored in, in LDA, which is not the main handle. You can do that if you want, you can put some data in LDA, then Puppet will look that up for you, so you don't have to modify everything on these all the time, but.
So when you say the node configurations, that says, when you see a machine whose name is Webby, that's going to be a web server, use this configuration.
Exactly, the node to class name mapping, so this node is a web server, and, and some of this stuff's dynamic, you know, some of it's automatic. A node knows whether it's a Red Hat server, so it tells the server, hey, I'm a Red Hat box. So here, I wrote a tool, and I've got a slide about this, but reality is better anyway. Yeah, this is the problem, so there's a, there is something that, so there's this tool factor that doesn't work when there's no network sometimes. There are some things it's trying to figure out, it's trying to figure out its MAC address and its IP address, and apparently, I would probably consider this a bug, but apparently, Macs don't like to do certain things without a network connection. So factor's hanging, but what factor's job is to do things like, maybe this will work. Ask the system a lot of questions, and, simple questions to get simple answers. And it takes, every question knows how to ask the system, every time you run Puppet, it asks factor everything it knows about the system, and then it passes all those answers up to the server. And you can use any of that information to make decisions on the server, and you can write custom facts really easily, again, a couple lines of Ruby. So you can make, in, in your Puppet configuration, you can automatically say, I want, you know, if there's a class named, if I'm a Darwin box, and there's a class named Darwin, include that class. If there's a class named, you know, Red Hat, and I'm a Red Hat box, include that class. That's what the include operating system class was. Yeah.
What if, what if you wanted to know what the MAC address of the third interface is?
That would be problematic today.
Or if you have like bonding or?
That would be problematic. This is definitely much more meant for decision-making about the configuration versus reconfiguring the box. If you're going to make a decision based on the MAC address of the third interface, you probably need to rethink about how you're managing your systems. Because most of, I mean, factor's mostly, it's mostly about deciding, you know, how, which class should I get? Should you look like this or that, you know, so FreeBSD doesn't have a root group, it's got a wheel group, so you have to know, should I tell it to have wheel group or root group, I got to know. So it's for that kind of decision-making, and much less about, you know, redeploying the configuration that already exists.
So how would you do this with Puppet if you, you had a configuration with, say, like, three interfaces, two of them are bonded, and each of them have like three V labels? How would you, like, how would you model that?
So, right now I don't, Puppet doesn't explicitly manage interfaces and things like that, like.
No, I understand, but you have to, you have to, you have to write that, you have to write some code to do, to have it modeled. How would you, how would you do that?
So what I would have is, I would have an interface type or an IP interface type, and it would, you would pass the information you want, you know, here's your IP address, here's your net mask, here's this kind of stuff. And the backend would know how to turn that into reality, and you might support a bit that said, you're a bonded interface, and you're bonded with this interface, or whatever, whatever it's modeled in your head mentally, you would build a Puppet type that models it basically the same way, and then you'd implement a provider underneath that, that could turn that model into reality.
Okay, so in this case, you'd probably have real and virtual interfaces.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, if you want network, there is wireless there.
I do, I mean, I can try that.
Five, three, six, five, six.
Five, six, E?
No, 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 it's recording.
It's not my network.
I don't want to go back to editing it.
I'll try it once more, but I, it's not critical for the, uh, this is why I brought a video, so that I, I didn't have to depend on it.
We have to switch it to X.
Oh, is that what it is?
No, you don't.
Yeah, should be in there. Let's go. There we go. Yeah, it doesn't have an address. Oh, well. So, let me show you the, now that I've shown you like what, what the track, a rough idea of what the tracking looks like, I'm going to try to show this video and see, see if this works. The big problem with the video is that I recorded it at work speed rather than speaking speed, so I'm going to have to pause it periodically and actually, you know, tell you what's actually happening. This is the log of the previous attempt to make sure it was working, so I ran through this about six times to make sure they worked right. So the idea here is that what I'm, what I'm doing is deploying a fresh, uh, creating a new subversion repository, creating a new track instance to allow me to manage that repository. So I go from no subversion, and, you know, it's going to be, it's available over HTTP, so I have a website where I can, you know, I'm going to show you that it doesn't exist, show you the track site doesn't exist, then I'm going to create both of them, automatically restart Apache because its config changed, and that will, and then I'll show you that the websites are there, yeah.
I'm sorry, so the, the tracking is the thing that makes sure that it stays the way you built it?
Okay, sorry, so track is a, it's a vue-CBS-like application that also does ticket management. So it's got a bug database, and a wiki, and a source browser. So it's an application that I use on my projects. So if you, you can go to reductivelabs.com/cgibin/puppet.cgi, and there's a Puppet track instance that has all my ticket database, and you can browse Puppet's source. So that's what it's for.
So track is not part of your?
No, no, it's just something that I'm managing with Puppet, as opposed to being part of it. It is somewhat self-referential, because I do use it to manage Puppet ironically, so. So I'm going to start by pointing out that I'm not cheating, there's no magic, I, um, so, go to Firefox and prove to you that, um, so this is what, you know, my Puppet repository, and there is no testing repository. And here is, here's my Puppet track site. So, you know, you can go and do browse source and view tickets and edit the wiki and stuff like that. And again, there's no track instance right now. So, I can't see it all, but up here is the program I showed you guys earlier, and basically what it says is, you know, make sure Apache's running, and you have to talk about a service, you have to talk about, if you want to change an object, you have to talk about that object. You can't say restart some service and not mention it. Puppet has to, you have to tell Puppet, this is what service I mean, and then you can use that in your dependency relationships. So you say, here's the service, it should be running. The SVN repo is a definition that I wrote that creates a subversion repository, deploys a version, you know, creates a new repository, and it's a simple thing that says, if this stuff isn't, isn't here, here's the command you use to create it. And then on it goes, oh, that's already there, so I'm good. The track instance is the code that I kind of showed you earlier, where it, it actually runs the command to create the new track instance. It chones the whole directory structure to the Apache user, so Apache can actually write to it, which is required, of course, for it to work right. And then it reconfigures the track, and then it creates an Apache configuration, and it notifies Apache, hey, you should restart yourself because I got some new work for you. So, again, there's the, the config that I'm going to run. Here's me running the config, and, yeah, you can't do that at all, can you? Basically, I'm just running Puppet, I'm specifying manually some, the source of the templates, because the server, yeah, I have a custom location of my templates, so it needs to know where to find those templates, and then, I run the config, I run the command, and it's going to scroll back very quickly if I'm going to scroll back up, and so you'll be able to see what's going on. All right, so here, you'll notice I'm fond of color, which actually, you almost can't tell from there, can you? This thing doesn't show the color very well, but Puppet's logging is the same as systlock logging, so I've got debug, info, notice, warning, error, crit, and emerge. I don't actually use crit or emerge for anything, I don't, you know, I haven't had a need to suddenly reboot your system because it's not going to happen, it happened on Puppet yet, but. So mostly there's a notice logs, and notice logs are generally used to indicate that something changed. So I modified your system in some way, it's worth at least noticing this. And the infolog is just, you know, eh, if you wanted it here, but by default, you won't see this. So the first step is that I created my new Apache config. And you'll notice that the ordering is somewhat random. This goes before Apache, but for some reason, the Apache or the track instance itself gets created after all of this. Did a topological sort, that's how it ended up, you know, whatever, I don't really care. As long as you specify dependencies right, it'll happen in the right order. So I'll let you know that this object is letting you know, hey, I'm going to refresh, I'm going to, I scheduled a refresh of Apache because I changed, and it needs to restart itself. And then here you have Apache, the next step saying, hey, guess what? I've got a dependency that changed, so I'm going to restart myself. Here you have the line of the actual command that I ran to create the subversion repository, and then the command to create the track instance, and then here's it making, changing the owner and group from root to track admin, or to WWdata, my, my web user account. So here's me pointing out all this, there is the, creating the, creating the file, notifying Apache, triggering, triggering the refresh. Now I'm going to create the subversion repository and the track instance, and then I'm going to change all these accounts. And then create the link so that the actual CGI link is now there. Go back to, oh, whoop, that was too fast. So anyway, you can see that subversion is now here, you saw for a brief glimpse there.
Is there a way to back up a little bit?
All right. All right. Nope, that didn't work there, anyway. So I create both.
We believe you.
Yeah, we believe you.
I would hope so, I wouldn't lie like this about this. There. So this is what a default plain Jane track install looks like, again, you've got the tickets and source browsing, and this is what the, you know, the wiki starts with, and you can go in and edit this. And this actually exists today, and I'm pretty sure it's non-authenticated, so you could probably go and edit that right now if you wanted to. That URL is probably still valid, I don't think I removed it afterwards. But you can see why I wanted to record this and not try to do it live, considering how well the previous demo worked. So this is a, a simple example, but it's, in some ways, it's one of the things I'm most proud of because it, it has three separate largely unrelated applications that all need to communicate. And you can, you can run the same config 50 times and as long as you haven't changed what you said it should look like, it goes, yep, I'm still good, and nothing happens. And you can change a little thing, like you change the mailing list that the track goes to and it rebuilt itself. Or if you've decided that the template that you're using to rebuild, to configure track for Apache isn't good, modify that template, all of your track instances will change. Apache will restart one time, not once for each of them. And so that's, that's how it works. And I just did, uh, five days at Stanford and we were able to, you know, go through a bunch of their different classes and model them pretty much the same way. You've got your packages, your config files and your services. And here's how they relate and here's how I want them to respond to changes and, uh, yeah, so.
So, so this looks interesting. So say, say I had this like hypothetical system, like existing system. Are you familiar with Verdant? Okay.
I think I've heard of it, but I don't think I've used it.
Okay, so say this, say this system.
Pretty generic name.
Sorry?
It's a pretty generic name, it's just truth.
Truth, yeah. Well, it's not Verdant I'm talking about, but say that if you had the system. So my question to you is, how would you model this in, in Puppet if possible? So the system essentially has a couple of features. It, um, it employs like any like, um, uh, configuration file syntax with key value pairs. It knows about, uh, it does inheritance, so you can say is equals something else. And if you have something else somewhere else, whatever key values pairs it has, you can, uh, they will add to the set. It, it can do lists, so if you have package equals full, package is bar, then you'll have, that package becomes a list. So, and, and it does like, um, you can have override. So you can say, like, um, you could inherit from something else, but if something else had an attribute food with a value 123, you could have the thing, um, that you're currently configuring, um, have food, give it the value 456 if you wanted to. So, um, given that it can do that, and it has other, become a lot of our features, but that's kind of like basic, the, the basic thing that it does, um, how would you model that in Puppet?
The problem with the INI files is that there's generally not a fixed list of valid attributes. Usually it's like, in this section, you can have one of 298 valid attributes and so.
It's all free form, yeah, there's no meaning to any of the attributes.
So it's very structured in terms of the format that's allowed, but it's difficult to model because the meaning is, is essentially random.
Yeah, it's just text.
So in this case, I would usually write what I would consider to be a hack solution. So this is an example of yesterday, or the day before, I don't remember exactly. I needed, I needed to manage mail aliases for Stanford. And so, actually, this was, I guess it was Friday night I wrote this pretty quick. And I just need something quick, you know, just like, I need you to say, I need to say, so I think I have an example usage at the bottom. Alias Luke, make sure that Luke is set to luke@mathup.com. There's an example of what you would list as an alias. And I want this to just go into the file and make sure that's worked that way. So what I essentially did is I used a bunch of exec statements and I, I just, I, there are two possible, uh, attributes to ensure. You can say, I want it to go away and make sure it's absent, or make sure it's this value. So I say, if it's absent, then I have a stupid set script that removes it. And if I say it should be here, then I have, then if it's already here, if it's, I think, uh, let's see. Unless it, if it's in here, then I do this, or if it's missing it all, then I add it. And if it's already there, then I just use set to make sure it's, it's correct. So you can use, you can use Puppet to do these, I consider to be hackish, relatively one-off things that kind of get what you want but aren't good modeling. That may be the best you can do with INI's files because a lot of times there is no model to INI files. If you don't have a model, if you can't model it mentally, then you can't model it in Puppet. I haven't seen something that I've been able to model mentally that I can conceive, I can think about and talk about, that I couldn't convert to Ruby code that did the work that I wanted. But INI files, especially some written by, you know, certain people are good at them, are good at writing them in a way that they're easy to understand and easy to talk about. And other people are good at writing them in a way that are, is impossible to understand and talk about.
You can write bad code in any way.
You can, and, um, you know, I mean, even, even Puppet's config file, for example, it's, it's pretty much just a list of, of attributes. And, you know, they're, they're up to like, you can, I think they're, by default, there are 50 or 60 of them that you can set.
But you have to define them somewhere. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't allow them to be like named by whatever because they have meaning to Puppet, right?
They do, yeah. And, and that's where it gets to be somewhat complicated is that in a lot of ways, you want to, you want to extract that meaning and validate it. So you don't wanna let Puppet fail if you've written a bad config file for it. You'd like to make sure that somebody says, hey, write Puppet's config file out like this. You validate their input and say, you know, Puppet's not gonna like that or Apache's not gonna like that or sudo's not gonna like that.
Oh, so you can, you can, so some of these attributes, is there a way to say, like to do that, like validation easily, like using like a regx or?
Well, then Ruby, yeah. If you use Ruby to do it, I, I've actually got, I mean, I don't know how quickly I can get to it, but, uh...
This is zone files?
This is to manage, uh, Solaris zones. So this automatically creates Solaris zones and will keep its configs insane and stuff like that. So I just got a, a small validation script here. And this, this is kind of a weird one because it specifies both the IP address and the interface. And then it just makes sure that it's a valid interface using Ruby's built-in interface system and... So yeah, I mean, for any of these attributes, you can set up how to validate the attributes, basically. So, yeah, I mean, I, clearly, validation is an important part of the system.
And you, you could, so you could refer to this from, from within the Puppet?
You cannot do that. Essentially, you can say, use this value and the system will puke on you if it's invalid. It'll say, literally won't puke on you, but it'll say, you know, hey, that's an invalid value, you know.
This is a compiler error, basically, right? This is a compiler error, right?
Yeah. And, and some of the validation can't happen until it gets to the client. Some of the, some of the validation requires state. But it gets to the client, you go to instantiate your configuration, the client says, this is an invalid config, throws it away, use the, uses the cache configuration in that case.
Right, but you, you, like, some of the things you might be able, wanna be able to detect is whether they use the same IP address on two different interfaces for the host, which you could detect, or?
Well, Puppet will do its best to not allow you to do that. So one of the things, this is, this is one of those things that, that is important to me, but I find difficult to talk about. Do you guys know what the word normalization means? I'm assuming you're familiar with it in the database world. The point is to take data and, and make it so that data is only in one place in your database, to reduce copies.
And in a canonical format.
Right, so Puppet enforces configuration normalization. You cannot talk about the same element twice in your configuration for a given host. So you can't have two parts of your configuration that say, Etsy, Apache, http.com should look like this. That's gonna be a compile error and I'm not gonna let you do it.
Yeah.
So if you set up your modeling, I can almost guarantee you're gonna have interface and IP address or interface and name, and you're not gonna be able to talk about the same interface twice. And then certainly within your interfaces, you're gonna wanna say, somebody else started using this IP address. So you can do that kind of validation, you can, you can, yeah, you can definitely do that. And within, the, the compiler will do everything it can to eliminate, uh, overwriting, you know, only two people talking about the same thing. And then within the system, you can do further validation and make sure the same kind of thing.
But what we're looking at here is a, is a standalone piece of Ruby code, right? So does it, how does it, how does it interact with the Puppet database that?
There is no Puppet database.
Well, isn't?
There's a list of objects, so this is a.
Sure, sure.
This is an instance method on, on the Zone IP Address class that when you try to instantiate this attribute, here's the Zone IP Address attribute. It, you, and you say, here's the value you should use. The Zone attribute says, I don't know, let me check that. And it validates it and goes, mm-mm, I don't want that. And so there's no database, it's just you try to feed it a value and it validates it at values at a time.
By database, I mean this, this collection of like instantiated classes and, and objects that you have. It's not a databases in postgressql.
It's a program.
It's a program, yeah, but, but it's a data, it's a knowledge database in some sense.
Sure.
So this gets called by the compiler? No.
So the problem is the compiler's on the server and this is instantiated on the client.
Oh.
So the job of the compiler, the job of the compiler is to essentially, um, composite, to reduce and composite your configuration. So you've got, you know, a class for every service in your network and a class for every operating system on your network and a class for every little thing you can manage and a class for every data center and a class for every type of hardware. So you've got all these things. Plus, you've got a lot of decisions to make about, you know, if I'm this little thing that behave this way or I, you know, use this group or that group or whatever. So you've got a lot of decisions to make. And the compiler's job is to take all of that logic and reduce it to a, a single, a single list of, here are the elements that should be on the system. And those elements will include things like relationship specification. So if you specify this element related to that element, that's an attribute to one of those elements, but to Puppet, it's just an element. The Puppet compiler actually doesn't know anything about any of these relationships. It's just an attribute to Puppet, to the compiler.
Yeah, the client does.
Right, so when you, you send this big list of what our amount, whatever essentially hash is to the client, and the client goes through and begins instantiating each one. And if any of those fail, if any of those fail to instantiate, and this happens in instantiation time on the client after you've done the XML RPC call.
Right.
The client does instantiation, if any of those fail, that config is considered invalid. I chuck it, I use the cache configuration and go on with my life.
So does that, does, so I'm just trying to figure out, so does the Puppet client call this code?
Yes.
So there is, there is like a module mechanism that you have where you can say, like, associated with this data type is call this code?
Well, so this is a class, this is a.
Oh, because it's, oh, I see, there you have it.
This is a class.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a validation method?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, it exists, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just curious, is this falling a little astray from what you had in mind for your talk or?
I don't know.
Have we been crawling into a rat hole or?
No, I, I don't know. Are you guys bored? I mean, do you think it's a rat hole? I can sit here and talk about this literally until I die, so.
That would maybe be the first speaker shakality in a Bailey's event. I think it would be the first fatality.
Gotta start somewhere, right? Yeah.
As far as creating a class for every operating system, you know, do you have to support several different versions of that operating system? What work do you have to go through to, to make sure all the command syntax is right and all of that?
A lot of it depends on how things are actually different. How do you need to, what decisions do you need to make to make the things work correctly? So if you've got two versions of Red Hat that are very similar, then, or two versions of anything that are very similar, usually you're not gonna have separate classes because they're gonna be so similar that it's not gonna be worth it. But if you have, you know, if you've switched from SunOS 4 to 5 or whatever it is, you know, they're almost different operating systems and so you've got, your, your decisions are a lot more complicated. It really just varies by the problem is, is the thing. And, and as much as possible within Puppet, I try not to assume things. I, I make it possible for you to make these decisions, but you, you still have to model them in some way. You have to, you have to decide, what decisions do I have to make? What information do I need to make those decisions? And then try to, try to write it out, essentially. It's like, I mean, I know it's not a very good answer, but I, I can show you how some of the decisions that I've made.
Right, you, you have to know the OSs to know how to do that.
You do.
If you're managing already, you should, you know, uh, different versions of HBUX and.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're using OS 10 on your, like, matter there, you know, but, you know, OS 9 is still around, you know?
Yeah, well, Puppet doesn't run on it, so.
That's, that sets the limit then, yeah.
Yeah, it does. And Puppet doesn't run on Windows either, and it probably isn't ever gonna, so it's conceivable, but.
I have a request for it to run on Windows. I would love to do automated configuration of all my platforms that I manage and I, I do have to manage Windows, it's never gonna go away, so please.
So here's the deal, I'm an open source developer. I, I make my money implementing, doing implementations, custom development in support of this product. I don't know how long it would take me to provide Windows support, but I would guess that it's months. I can spend those same months making good money doing Unix implementations or try for free, make it work in Windows. That's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen for free. If somebody wanted to pay me to do it, it would probably cost a lot. It's not that I'm unwilling to do it, it's that no one's willing to pay me for it. And, and that's, I'm kind of, I'd love to tell you I'm doing this altruistically. I want this tool to exist, if I were still a system happen, I would want this to exist for me. So it's, it's marginally altruistic, but I'm not willing to do this part-time. I tried to do it to be a tool developer part-time. I tried to make good tools part-time and it just didn't work. So the only way that I know how to do this full-time is to do the things that I think are necessary when I'm not being paid by a client and then try to find clients to pay me to do the complicated stuff or the things that they really care about. And that's about the only way I know how to do it, so.
So this kind of leads into a question I was, I was hoping to ask you. I used to be a pretty heavy BladeLogic user.
Yeah.
Those run on Windows.
Yes, it does.
Why would you, so you used to work at BladeLogic, gave up on that? I'm kind of curious how Puppet compares to that BladeLogic stuff and also why you wouldn't necessarily tell her about BladeLogic?
Well, so, let's see. BladeLogic and Puppet are similar in some ways. Their modeling is relatively similar. They, they both talk about these, these kind of somewhat high-level elements. You can talk about packages and files and, but BladeLogic wasn't interested in expanding that list of elements. They had a pretty fixed list of elements, they had four or five, and they were like, yeah, we don't really feel like modeling services. And it just wasn't important to them. And I tried to explain to them that services kind of matter a little bit. And they were like, ah, we'll let the clients figure it out. And, and to me, it's, it's fundamental. I want to talk about everything in a high level. That's, that's, that's 99% of what I want out of the world. And any tool that's not gonna do that, I just don't have a use for. And BladeLogic wasn't, I couldn't get him to be interested in that. And that was the biggest reason why I left was, this is what I'm looking for is this abstraction layer. If the tool can't provide the abstraction layer, can't hide all these details, then I'm gonna have to work too hard. But another big problem was that I can share this, I can take any of these snippets, I can write a Puppet config and I can say, thi, this track install is great. And this is what, if you wanna deploy track, boom, we're done. You use mine, you do a CPAN install track or a PRM install track. You know, PRM is the Puppet recipe manager, it's, we're working on building, you know, something akin to CPAN. So you could download something that could manage this for you. Well, you're not gonna get that from BladeLogic partially because, um, it's a GUI, you know? So you can't, you can't export decision constructs, you can't. And they were talking about being able to kind of do that, but it's like this huge database dump that no, nobody can look at and, and go, ah, I see what you're doing, yes, I wanna reuse that. And to me, those are kind of, those are two pretty, pretty critical things. The abstraction layer plus the code reuse and the code shareability. And, and those are the two biggest reasons why I left BladeLogic. So in terms of, if you wanna manage Windows, BladeLogic may be a good option. And at the very least, it may be the best option available, which is to say that on a scale of 1 to 10, it might be a 3 and everything else is a 1. But I don't know. I tried to use the tool, the last week, two weeks I was there, they wanted me to do some work on, in their lab. And so I tried to actually use their tool to do this work. And let me tell you, if I hadn't been quitting at that point, I definitely would have. I couldn't use it, but that's me, I'm a software hater, you know, I've already explained that. I, I'm not tolerant of bad software and my definition of bad software happens almost immediately. So it could be me, I know people who use it and like it. I know people who use CF Engine and like it. I know people who write all their scripts in, you know, insane things like Python. So, you know, it's, it's, to each his or her own is what I would say to that. I would like to run on Windows, I don't have the time for it and I can't afford the six months it's gonna take me to develop it, is, is the short answer for Windows. I would like that to happen. I know that Mark Burgess didn't implement CF Engine support on Windows by himself. I know that that was, somebody wanted that and it got implemented essentially for him. Puppet is GPL, I don't think I ever actually said that. It's under the GPL. A lot of stuff that I, that's in there is contributed to, you know, somebody contributed up to, up to date support last week and the week before. As much as possible, if somebody contributes code, I accept patches very quickly. I have a, you know, very quick turnaround time on code review. So I want that, it's just that I personally am highly unlikely to do it. But I don't have any Windows boxes to manage, so.
It would seem that you could get funding for a company to do just that.
But now I'm just me, which means that my costs are relatively low. My value demonstration is relatively simplistic and that I have a relatively self-selected clientele right now. People call me and they go, man, I got these problems, I looked at their tools and I think yours is better, will you come and I'll give you some money? And I go, yeah. So I don't, I, I'm in the lucky position of, for the few clients I have not having to demonstrate value because they're already convinced before they call me. As I get more employees, I may be able to bring on one to two employees in the next month, people who are gonna need more like partners. Clearly, the sales cycle's gonna have to be stronger, I'm gonna have to get more, things like that. I'm gonna have to get a lot better demonstrating value. In terms of investment to get Puppet supporting Windows, if that's what you're talking about, how would I demonstrate to somebody?
As an example, or anything, because, because the folks would see the value on what's necessarily on or how they're willing to pay their money to get some people.
Right, that's right. So I, I've had pretty good luck, I mean, it looks very likely that some of my clients are gonna pay me to do some custom development. You want this functionality, it's really important to you, you don't have the, the manpower to do it or, you know, people have these different buckets that money goes in. This bucket can be used to spend on this stuff but not on that stuff. So people are willing to spend money on custom development. I haven't had that much effort convincing them that custom development is worth it in some cases. A Windows port, I think, would be a lot of work, so it's, that's not, you know, five, 15 grand. It's, you know, six months of somebody's effort probably and a lot and a lot of test code. So that could be a lot more work. I don't know how I would demonstrate that value. I don't know how I would demonstrate that value, it would have to matter to somebody a lot that it ran on Windows, basically. So they would have to really believe in how puppet thought about the world. And they, and I haven't talked about what the other projects that I have that I'm working on, one of the, because all the compiling happens on the server, there's a lot of room for introspection on your configuration. You can store all of your config, you can store your compiled configs on the server in a database, there is a puppet database, but. So you can store them in that, in a database and do introspection, like, you know, which machines have this deployed? You can get what a lot, looks a lot like an asset manager that is derived from your real configuration. And then when you get logs back and reports back, those logs and reports will say things like, this, this aspect of your DNS configuration is broken, even though it's a file that doesn't say anything about DNS, puppet knows that's a file related to providing DNS support. So you can get a lot of server-side processing that's very difficult normally, and a lot of tools just don't provide it. Bconfig is very good at this, this is something that Bconfig excels at, is this reporting.
Right.
And I'm doing my best to copy that guy as quickly as possible, so. But it enables me to do that kind of stuff. So if it's important to have this kind of tool, you want it to be open source, and you do have to run on Windows, I don't think I can convince somebody else of that value. Somebody else has to be convinced that, that they really need this problem solved. And today, it would probably be difficult for them to say, you know, spend a bunch of money on, on me personally, because I don't have any Windows expertise, I don't have a guy who, who's a very good Windows programmer, so. And Ruby, I don't know how good Ruby's Windows support is, I believe it's getting better all the time, like the Beatles would say, but I don't know if it's there yet, so. I can't tell you that.
I don't, I don't do Windows.
Yeah, I don't either, I mean, that's, that's my biggest problem, is I, I literally have been, fortunately, it, never have had to do Windows.
I understand it's there.
Yes, I, I've heard this, and it's like the, the gum on the sidewalk, you just go, whoa, don't step in that, you know? I don't know.
Quick question, Max.
Hold on a second, what?
Uh, you mentioned the community.
Uh-huh.
How is the community today, and also in regards to users on called alternate operating systems and so on? Do they contribute a lot of their own experiences and so on?
Yeah, so somebody just contributed, um, some Gentoo support, like unit scripts, and something else, I think service management for Gentoo. I don't know if SUSE accounts as an alternate operating, alternative operating system or not.
That's an operating system.
So what kind of things, are you talking about like VOS, or are you talking about like, how alternative do you mean?
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking like, if you were to say, what is your rough user base today, if you were to give a guess?
I would say that the vast majority of people are running on Red Hat and Debian.
Well, sorry, how many users, or like, if you were to, active contributors, that's it.
So I have, I'd say I have close to ten people who are actively involved in producing and getting rid of bugs. I've got at least five people who commonly contribute patches, or close bugs, or, um, or, or, you know, produce content back out. Somebody asks a question, somebody gets involved, they produce content back out. I've got someone like a hundred people on the developer's mailing list, and which is basically the same thing as users mailing list at this point. I know that my dev mail traffic is a hundred K plus every month, which is not a very good metric, but it's all the metric I got. A lot of it might be tickets, I don't, you know, I'm sure a lot of it is tickets, it depends on the month, right? So some of it's, I get a lot of enhancement requests. The user base in terms of who's using it varies quite dramatically in terms of skill level. I know I have some people who, they probably have heard of Unix and Linux, you know, it's like, I don't know, I got this box and I started using puppet, and. I mean, as far as I can tell, these guys, they have no idea what they're doing, but they're trying to use puppet to do whatever it is. So, and then I have, also have people who, I just heard, in fact, last week, I, I got, I have a, there's a guy who works at Red Hat, David Luttercourt, who's the package maintainer for puppet. He built all the spec files and, and, and make sure the packages look good and work well. He just told me that Red Hat, so Red Hat's had this stateless Linux initiative for a long time, they're gonna start shipping this to clients. And apparently, Red Hat has decided to make puppet a core of stateless Linux. If you're gonna use stateless Linux from, from Red Hat, it's, you're gonna also use puppet. So Red Hat has a number of people, they, they've got somebody who just did all the LVM modeling using these new Congo tools, which I don't know what they are, but apparently it's a new way to interact with LVM. He modeled all that in puppet, so you can use puppet to manage all of that file system, volume group insanity using puppet. So these guys, Red Hat's spending a good bit of money on making sure this stuff works. They're looking at trying to get their service people to start using it, and internal admins use it. There's another company who's spent, it's been a very long week. There's another company who's, who's got some people internally who are using it, um, and then a number of, you know, a consultant in Australia who's, who's spending a lot of time on it, and his, his company is gonna pay to do some custom developments and stuff like that, so. It definitely runs the gamut, it's not a thousand years, I don't think there are a thousand implementations. Deutsche Post is using it, and has been using it for eight months, they were the one of the first users. These guys just started emailing me in bad English and asking questions, and, but they've been using it for months and months, and I don't know exactly what they're doing, and you know, it involves Sluris and so on. If you've ever run an open source project, you'll know, you just have no idea. You could have zero users, or a thousand, or ten thousand. If you had a hundred thousand, you'd probably know it, but you could have a lot and not really know it.
How does it compare to Net Director?
Um, so I've actually been talking to the people who, who write Net Director, and, and we're trying to find a way to, at least I'm trying to find a way to get them to replace their agent with puppet's agent. Because the Net Director is another open source tool, I think it just recently went open source.
Yeah.
And it's got a Python backend, and it's got a very good GUI. So they've spent a lot of time on this GUI, which we need GUIs, right, or at least some people need GUIs. And so my goal is to get them to the point where they can reuse puppet's agent, because puppet has, puppet's agent has almost all the functionality of their agent. It's almost a complete overlap. So the modeling is, is not very similar, their, their GUI is, uh, they have a very dumb agent. They're, they don't do much thinking on the client. So they pretty much say, here's a file, here's a command, that's just about it. So they do all the translation, all the modeling from this high-level object to low-level commands on the server, which BladeLogic also does ninety-nine percent of the time. They've been talking about trying to move that to the edge, but they haven't, as of last I heard, eighteen months ago, they hadn't, and it didn't look like they were gonna get it done anytime soon, because they didn't think it was important. But so puppet's agent is very smart, all the modeling's on the agent, but I can, I can do all the work they wanna do. The tools are very different because they're, they're very GUI-centered, they're very, you know, I want, user-friendly is a, is a bad term, because I think, I think Vim is user-friendly, so. But it's, it's very, uh, new user-friendly, I would say. And so I, I hope we can find a way to work together. And there also is a, a group called the Open Management Consortium, and it was just founded in May, and I'm one of the members. And the goal is to find all these open source companies, these companies who are producing open source management products, people who have money behind getting these products high level, I know, high quality, getting them to work together so that our tools are integrated, and we can, we can avoid reproducing the same work, you know? How many people have to write a library that knows how to create a user and net info? How many people have to, you know, it's just ridiculous how much duplication there is. The goal is to try to reduce in that, Hyperion is in that group, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's the goal.
Can, can't you ask either the RPM folks or the, the deep package, uh, folks to just give it up?
I would like to ask both of them that in the same room at the same time, and then close the door and like throw some mean cats in the room, you know? Sure, which one's gonna do it, right? I, to me, it's a rattle, until I can get someone, if, I'd like to get somebody to the point where, again, to me, I want manageable software to win. I would like puppet to be so good, or some tool like puppet, like, I'm not eager to simply attach to puppet. I want this functionality, I want this to be this easy, I want, I have this vision of how easy it should be to talk, to talk to systems. If somebody else provides that vision before me, I'm not gonna be offended, I'm gonna change fields, because they'll, you know, woo-hoo, we're done. But somebody else provides that, whoever does it, it should make it so obvious that packaging sucks, that somebody will go, oh, there's this huge gap in, in like good software, so I'm hoping that better software will clearly, clearly be better. As opposed to just, well, I mean, they both kind of suck, you know, they just suck differently. One of them should clearly be a lot better, and one of them, you know.
Right.
That's, it, it should be obvious, right? It should, you should be able to look at any two pieces of software and say, this one is more manageable. But that's never a test, right? I mean, how many companies ask themselves when they go to buy a piece of software, but how manageable is it? How, how can, how easily can I automate it? Not nearly enough, because no soft, no personal software I've ever bought has been easy to automate.
The same ones who ask if it's secure.
Well, and the answer is usually about as good. Why, yes, I've told you it's secure, and therefore it is, okay, good.
Trust me. So how, how big a difference do you think there is between, say, Lilo and Grub regarding manageability?
I personally consider Grub to be roughly a hundred X manageably than Lilo. I, 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 Lilo is one of those tools that, um, I would like to, I know, I'm assuming you guys have all seen the Jay and Simon Bob do Hollywood movie or whatever, and at the end, they take all their money and they fly around beating up people who have said bad things about them online. The author of Lilo is one of those people I'd like to fly to his house and beat him up, because that's how bad I think that software is. Your, your system can't boot and all you get is LI? No, I'm sorry, you should get beaten up for that.
He just lives over at Sunnyvale, so everyone knows.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be fine.
And so is the one that works on MacBooks and Linux.
But Luke, isn't it fair to say that there's only a limited amount of code you can fit into four hundred and sixty-odd bytes?
I don't know, all I know is that Grub actually tells me what's going on. I don't get LI when Grub can't boot my system.
Actually, if Grub is at the same stage where Lilo could only give you LI, Grub is actually worse. It will give you less diagnostic information than that.
Use Leonard signifies different levels, I really know.
The rest of the bootloader. But anyway.
I don't wanna get into that rattle, I'm sure I already did, but.
Yeah, as I understand it, Grub cheats because it will use like a whole cylinder for some of the stuff than just one little.
I don't know.
We can take that offline.
Yeah, and frankly, anyway, bootloaderers is one of those things, the fact that you need a bootloader is annoying, right? So we're already in a rattle.
So you're talking about puppet configurations of the program, and running the tools of software engineers. So what do you do about a debugger and a test suite?
I, I would say that puppet is a compiler and puppet manifests with programs, and they're probably at the same point that C was in nineteen seventy-two. So I hope to have those someday, and I don't yet. I mean, again, this is me, I've been doing this for eighteen months, and I want those things, and those are clearly in the plan. And the more people I have who care about this product and are, are using it to do complicated things, the better it will be. But I do not have those right now, and I haven't had the brain space to start planning it.
Yeah, I know Steve Trugout was doing stuff with Zen for the test suite kind of thing, I don't know if that's gonna work, but.
Yeah.
At least not comprehensively, but.
So fundamentally, Steve's idea that you have to replicate your entire infrastructure, and you can do so, and it's a valid test, I don't believe that's a. I mean, you have a test server and a, and a production server. The production server is in use all the time, and so var is full because it creates logs, and the test server is not in use, and so var is empty. Boom, you know, your test works and your production fails. I mean, it's just, you cannot sufficiently replicate, so that's not a valid way to test things.
Right.
There's a much better way to test things, and, and the, the real way you need to test things is, given what I think this configuration should produce, is it actually produce those kind of things? So that's, I think that's where tests are gonna look, but I don't know what the unit tests are gonna, you know? It's, it's gonna be hard to unit test this kind of thing, I, I know that, I don't know how it's gonna work.
Is there a dry-run mode?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a dry-run mode, and I'm working on things like diff mode, where you can actually get like, so right now you can say, run this in dry-run mode, run the whole config, or these pieces of the config in dry-run mode. I'd like to get to the point where you could actually go to a system and say, you know, print me out a nice diff, so I can take that and then, you know, manually massage that in some ways that I want. There's also, one of the things that drove me nuts about CF Engine was that, um, it worked very well standalone, it was running on its own, but if you were using it to update a configuration, you're making changes, and you're kind of iteratively getting into the right configuration, you had to run the whole configuration in time, and it got very, um, took a lot of time, and it got to the point where you were spending all this, this wait time and visual, visible time doing things. So in puppet, you can actually specify, I wanna just, just run this class, just run the code related to the LDAP server class.
Right.
And so I do everything I can to make it so that, uh, it's easy as a, as a sysadmin who's trying to build a configuration, easy to do things like that. So there is a rattle about them. Yeah?
When is puppet written in?
It's written in Ruby.
Ruby?
Yeah. So I was a Perl developer when I started writing puppet, and all the code that I'd done before that, I'd never seen Ruby in my life when I started writing puppet. And I tried to write it in root, in Perl, because at the time I was convinced, Perl kicks ass. And I couldn't, and so I tried to write it in Python, because everyone was saying how great Python was. This is like three years ago, before they'd heard Ruby. And, uh, Python makes my eyes bleed, so I just, I, I just can't do it, I don't know what it is.
Have you and Alex Martelli ever been in the same room together?
Alex Martelli?
Yeah, this one.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's possible.
I'd like to see you guys duke it out.
I, I don't really like arguing, like, I'm not, I can't argue pu- pu- Python's technical faults. I can't tell you other than little niggly things that just make you go, whoa? Other than that, it just makes my eyes bleed, I don't know what it is. I see that code and, and it hurts. And I've successfully written functional Python code since then, um, and I had to get glasses, I mean, it was, it's old. So, so I tried Ruby, I, because I, I had a friend who'd heard Ruby was good, he'd never seen Ruby either, but he was like, oh, yeah, I got people, they, they say it's great. So I was like, okay, I'll try that. And in four hours, I went from having never seen a line of Ruby code in my life to having a functional prototype that I couldn't write in Perl, which I knew really, really well at the time. So since then, it was like, I'm throwing the, I'm throwing the receipt away, I'm, I'm keeping it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's big in Japan. It was written by a guy whose nickname is Mats, he's out of Japan, he's Japan, Japanese, so it's, 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 at least as old as Python, it's been around for more than a decade. But the documentation was just recently translated to English, so.
It's a little easier for, for English-speaking people to learn now.
The code's right there, I mean, come on, the code's in English, right?
It's in source.
Yeah, so, um, and Ruby on Rails is the big reason why Ruby's getting a lot of attention. I actually, um, I, I've been using this since before Ruby on Rails was written, but now that Ruby on Rails is big, it's a big web framework that, there's a lot of talk about it, if you were to go search for it, you would see lots of froth, lots of people talking about how great it is, or how, I could do that in Python, well, I could do that in Perl, like, rrrr. There's a lot of discussion about that, so Ruby's gotten a lot more attention because of that. So I'm thankful for those guys, at least because of that, if nothing else, um, so.
Have you looked at Nitro?
I have not, is that another web framework, or what?
Yeah, arg Nitro, arg is the, uh, the ORM, and Nitro is the framework.
I don't like writing web applications, so I, I've used Rails a little bit because I had to, and because, in some ways it makes sense for me to use Rails, but to my very best not to write web applications, because I can't, they always look horrible, so I just feel like.
So, uh, just an idea for like a test system, like production versus test scenario or whatever? Wouldn't you be able to use like a, um, similar to like tripwire, or like a hash checksum like system where you actually got like a complete, these are the files that were created then, after like a complete dry-run versus, and then you could do a.
I think there's gonna be a lot of that kind of stuff in there, where, where you do have ways to validate the output of the system. I, I don't, I don't know what it's gonna look like in the end. I've got a lot of like relatively vague ideas for how to test the output, how to, um, recompute the output, so you know it, you know, you run it through again and make sure you get the consistent results, or, but the big problem is how to translate intent into reality. Well, I think you should be running this service, well, am I right? So the real unit test is, can you hook your configuration management system up to your monitoring system in a way that your monitoring system will tell you whether you're right or not? I mean, I think there are a lot of ways like that, where you can specify both directions, the configuration direction, and then the output direction, so that you've got unit tests built into the system. I deploy a new configuration, and my monitoring system will tell me right now if that configuration is providing, providing the output that I expect. And your monitoring system should be good enough that when you say, I want you to run LDAP, it goes, I will make sure you're running LDAP. And you should have a program in a way that it can speak to your services and validate that they're working correctly. That's very difficult to do, that costs, you know, you can pay two guys a hundred and twenty grand a year and still not get it, but you sure are spending a lot of money. It, it, it's not easy, I don't know.
Yeah, basically, what I'm thinking is, let, let's say that you, you build two systems that are technically identical, but they're placed in two different scenarios. One is tied in a, a network connected only to a test network, one is, and as you said, one is dumping, uh, creating a lot of test files, and the one that's not. And eventually, the, the var fills up. Um, in example tripwire monitoring, this would, uh, trigger on the, the var files, because you see, oh, a lot of files are changing, or these files are changing on this.
The problem is that a lot of that stuff, you can do all those things, but it's really, it, it, it's very difficult to set up, that's what I would say. I, I'm, I'm probably a solid year for spending a lot of time on that kind of stuff, just because it takes so much effort to do, essentially. You have a question?
Yeah, closely coupled is Ruby syntax to other compigs?
Right now, it's not tightly coupled at all.
Yeah.
Um, you could certainly re-implement puppet in another language, and it would look Ruby-ish, because puppet looks Ruby-ish. But as far as I know, there are currently, there is nothing about puppet that is tied to Ruby with some very brief, small exceptions. The template, template format is ERB, so that's, that's Ruby, of course. The, um, there are a couple of small semantics, like true and false, I, I actually use Ruby's true and false, which, you know, that shouldn't be that hard, right? And then I use Ruby's regex engine internally to do some, you know, whether this is a valid string, or a, you know, whether this needs to be quoted, or that's okay on its own. Most of those are, are pretty small and are, are pretty portable, you know? Perl and Ruby and Python, I think, all have the same definition of what a word is, all the same definition of what, you know, that kind of thing, so. You know, it might, it might not be fun in C, but then, what is, right, so. Yes?
Did you actually apply to like Google Summer of Code to get some developers to help you out?
I did not. I, uh, yeah, I did not. I have talked as much as possible, I've tried to find anybody who I thought would be interested in this, I've talked to essentially every investor who would be willing to talk to me, I've talked to every. I haven't tried to like call the CEO of companies, you know, if, if I've got connections at companies that I know tend to invest in this kind of thing, I've tried to talk to those investors, those, those people. I did interview at Google, and, um, my goal was to, you know, see if they would be interested in working on a tool like this that was gonna be available publicly, and the answer was essentially, not really. We're big believers in using open source, so I, I, I kind of have, have given up on, on at least Google being involved at all. Uh, other companies seem to have a little more interest, I think I've talked to a couple of people like Yahoo, who were interested in trying to be involved in puppet in some way. It didn't, I don't, it didn't really occur to me that the, the Summer of Code would be a, a good option. I have talked to like Paul Graham about, you know, he's got the, the micro-investment stuff, so I've talked to him some, and, you know, he does, he only does web applications, so. I, I could try that next time it rolls around and see if they're interested, but it would be interesting, I guess. I don't know. I hadn't thought of that one. Any other questions? Anything that you feel like has growthed in evidence in mentioning? And it's only been, what, an hour and a half, so. We can keep this going for another two, can't we? Yeah. Well, it looks like that's about it, right? Oh, one more question.
Do you think that most of your new users or new converts to Puppet come from people that don't have existing configuration management systems, or people that have bad ones, or ones they, they don't get along with?
Almost no one is, hates their configuration management system enough that they're willing to change it. There are some exceptions. One of them is in this work.